What a allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will everybody make sure you have the mic on?
All right. Let the record reflect that Director Sorkin is either running late or she's going to be absent. Student representative.
I don't got a lot today, but the play was performed last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It went really well. A lot of people showed up during the performances. Turnabout was also this last Saturday, and a lot of people showed up and had a really good time. Cross-country sections was last Thursday, and every single person on the team got a personal record on their 5K. The team got 10th place overall out of 18, and Natalie Phillips advanced to state. Individual stake for tennis was also last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Lydia Delitch won her first match at state and then lost a second close match. Overall, she got top eight at state. Our knowledgeable teams have been doing very well this year with quite a few teams getting top five at every single meet. The University of Superior, Wisconsin, is coming to visit the Commons on October 31st to visit, and students can see what they have to offer. Picture retakes are November 1st, and the final day of the first marking period is on Friday, November 1st.
All right, thank you. 5.0, agenda additions and deletions.
The only suggestion, I know that you talked about the possibility of approving a realtor to sell some of our properties.
Yes, I did.
Do you want to put that on there?
Yes, let's put...
That would become 12.2.
That would be 12.2, it would be 12.3.
12.2. Is there 12.2?
Yes.
What is 12.2?
Maintenance projects. That's for the roof. So 12.3?
Right. I must have printed an older version.
And what will that be?
Talk about sale of existing buildings. Actually, just to be specific, approve hiring a realtor for sale of buildings sometime.
Okay, we don't need to motion to add that deletion now?
No, you're gonna approve the agenda on sound, why not?
Thank you. 6.0 visitor input, Jeff, do you have anybody sign up for?
Nope.
7.0, approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve it with the addition of the 12.3 for approving the hiring of a realtor for sale of buildings.
Okay, so the motion by Director Sather, second by Director Yohan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.0, approve the Treasury report for the second check writing in October.
Yeah, just do the normal.
Well, we can...
Well, let's...
Let's have a discussion on...
So, there's three versions in your package. One of them is the old version that we used to use, one of them is the version like Virginia does, and there's a third one that is a direct print out of Smart Finance that basically has the same information as Virginia does. Just looking for an okay to do the Smart Finance version. The only difference is it looks different, but it still has the UFRS codes and the notes as to what those checks are for in it.
So the Smart Finance one is 8.0B, or is it 8.0C? This one here?
That is the Virginia model. That's the Smart Finance version.
And this one is completely computer-generated.
So all we have to do is hit print.
And the 8.0B is exactly the same as 8.0C, but it takes a little bit more effort.
You gotta cut paste all those UFRS numbers into a spreadsheet, that's the only... So these two we're looking for is, are you okay with the... I mean, it isn't exactly what Virginia has, but what we had talked about last time, but it's a lot less labor intensive to do the Smart Finance version. I think it still has the same information on it.
Yeah, I give it the details still of what you're purchasing and paid for.
So, yeah, that's why you see three copies or three in there, just because there's just some issues with where the money's going, not money going, but just how it's all...
Right.
The expenditures for the month.
I mean, as we get closer and closer to get on, we'd be doing things the same way, correct?
Correct.
Which makes sense, and I'm... I'm good with either one of these formats.
The only reason I'm recommending the Smart Finance format is I don't have the office personnel that Virginia does. I mean, they can just hit print on that one, and it goes where it is. They gotta, it's about two hours to cut and paste all those UFRS numbers into a spreadsheet.
I'm good with the computer-generated. I think if we have something that already has the information, there's no reason that we're not using that versus paying someone two hours' worth of wage to do something that we can get generated.
And it's got the...
Yeah.
It's got the 8.0C, right? The C has got the same information as B.
Yeah.
It's just you just...
I agree.
So if we're okay with that, we'll continue with that version, and then you can do the report, and we'll prove it?
Another report for the second check writing in October, basically it details total disbursements of $211,707.21.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the Treasury report as presented?
I'll move.
We approve the Treasury report as presented by the Treasurer.
So, motion by General Eeny, support by Director Lotiger, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.0 consent agenda, approve the minutes of the regular meeting from Monday, October 14, 2019.
Not much controversy in there this time.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Director Schubert, second.
Support.
Support by Director Sather, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.0, or 10.0, there was no items removed from the consent agenda. 11.0 personnel, 11.1 approve pair professional assignment for Christine Miller.
Mr. Chair, we have two pair professionals here. They are directly tied to individual students that have a pair professional need in their IEP, so we are following the law by... They were posted, 11.2 was an internal move from playground aid to pair professional aid. 11.1 is a new hire, we didn't have anyone internally. She has had past experience as a pair professional at different schools, and is highly qualified. And she's also the only one that applied.
So, we will approve 11.1. We'll do these, do you want to do these individuals?
You have to do them individually, I'm just explaining.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve pair professional A assignment for Christine Miller?
I'll make a motion.
So it's motion by Director Yohan. Motion by Director Yohan, support by Director Lotiger, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.2 approve pair professional A assignment for Courtney Briskie. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Support.
So, move, motion by Director Sather, support by Director Schubert. Schubert, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.2, new business, set date for policy committee.
Um, dig out your calendars, if you could get a policy committee in next week. I have the policies that we need to review, I will send those out tomorrow. Uh, let's take a look. So, we're committed for Monday for half of LSR. How about Tuesday, the 5th? I'm just rolling through dates, if you tell me no, I'll move on to the next one.
The PIP though.
I'm good.
So that's November 5th. Yep.
Do it.
What time?
5:00 or 6:00.
I'm good with either. I'll be in Duluth until 4:00, so, um... I would be pushing.
6:00 PM?
November 5th at 6:00.
Policy committee, set date for policy committee. Need a motion for that? No, we don't, do we?
We're just starting a date.
Looking for a date.
12.2, approve maintenance projects.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I invited Mike Holt here, he's been working on those things, so go ahead, Mike. You know, seat at the student rep thing, man.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. I know you last meeting, we, Jeff, talked a little bit about some of these projects. Um, on the roofs, I'd like to recommend that we go to a timing material. Just because we're running into the bad time of year, we could have two feet of snow in it this week, you never know. Um, it's hard to get these contractors here at the last bit because of the fact we didn't know we had these problems until it started pouring for the last two weeks. So with the timing material, we would patch the problems we have, and then probably in the spring we could revisit it, or whatever, because we were talking about putting a different roof on in Gilbert of the boiler roof there, that one, and also doing extensive repair on it. But we also have two leaks in the old gym in Gilbert, and by the cafeteria, it's also leaking down here. So if we went to a timing material, the company that I've been working with, with Jamar, they would get it done within a week here, and we'd be done. At least we wouldn't have anything leaking and everything else. And I think it'd be a lot less expensive. And, like I said, the other ones, I'm still waiting for a contractor to come for range corners. So, I just don't know, and if we get a bunch of bad weather, we're gonna be in trouble there.
Now, when you say the old gym, what gym is that?
That's the one with the track above it.
Oh, okay, that'd be the...
Yeah, it's been leaking in there, and like I said, if it's a normal thing that's not raining lots, we don't really have a problem. If it rains and rains and rains, it's pouring in there. And we don't want to ruin that floor, so, I mean, it's something that should be addressed, but I think on the timing material, we can get it done right away, we'll get it patched, we'll save the district money. That's the way I would think it.
What was the original bid?
Well, there was a bid for, to replace that whole roof of the boiler room, that was like $19,000, and to put a general repair on it, a big repair, would've been like eight. But they also suggested the timing material, the more I think about it, you know, I mean, can't really give you a bid on that, but at least we know that the methodable jobs can get patched, and I'm assuming it'd be considerably less. And even before they start, I can get a rough estimate of that, it would help.
Not to exceed a certain dollar amount?
Not to exceed, yes.
That would be good.
I mean, I don't know if that works for you guys or not, but I just don't know how else we're gonna get it done before we get snow in here.
Yes, my concern is by the time we would get that bid to actually give a approval...
Right.
You know, the weather, the weather could be tight. So would it be appropriate then for us to make, to set a limit in the meeting today to be able to do this repair up to a certain amount?
Uh, that's, that's what I would think, but, I mean, that's not my decision.
I mean, we could approve the repairs as long as it doesn't exceed X amount of dollars, correct, Jeff? And what is that dollar amount that it has to...
Well, I guess I was, I wasn't aware of the old gym. I mean, I know what the boiler room and the...
Right, cafeteria.
They're looking at $8,000 for a patch there, and the cafeteria, it's not a whole lot.
No, but the one in the old gym, it's... Well, it's, if you go, if you're familiar with going out on the roof up there, it's up that second floor, and then it's, you go at that door, I can't even describe really, but it's, it's not an extensive thing, but it just needs to be patched. And I'm thinking really, this would, whole project with the patch and everything, I would think would be under $5,000.
So, so, but we still haven't addressed the boiler roof repair, that is something separate. So this is the old gym, and you're expecting no more than $5,000?
Yeah.
I mean, I would say go ahead, if it's not, if not to exceed $5,000, I'd say go ahead and get it done.
Same floor?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, on boilers. No, I know you saw the, did you see the last bit from JK Mechanical?
Yeah.
Okay, um, another, Jamar also does this, it's another branch of the company, and they were here last Thursday, and they were supposed to give me their bid today, and it didn't come yet. I'm sorry, trying to get it here. But on that also, I'm sure it's gonna be around the same, but what I can do with that, as soon as that comes in, I can get it to Jeff, and he can get it to you guys. There's three on that one, I don't know if you, did you guys know? So, but at least I did, it just didn't come, I've been sitting in the office waiting for it to come.
Can we...
Did you contact Bolt too?
Yes, Bolt. Bolt is on a bunch of jobs, as soon as I can get here, they'll come. See, I'm just, it's another thing we're running at the time of year, where everyone's tying up their end of the jobs, and...
Do we have, do we have any answers about the, two of the things possibly being insurance issues?
Yes, I talked to our insurance agent, Jamie Linseth. The one with the pipes that have come down to 18 inches off the ground, that we have to do. That is something that, when they inspect the boilers next, if they're not done, then we'll get cited or whatever the consequences there are.
Yes, I still have, do we, have we been tracking the temperature in the pool?
Yes.
What's it been at?
Well, we're trying to keep it right around 80, 81. But like this morning now, because it was colder out, so we had the heat on, and the pool was up to almost 86, which is too warm for the girls to swim. So, um, and that's really, uh, that one, I think, I mean, we gotta do something about that. And I understand money is the big deal here, and, like I said, I was hoping to come in and have the other one here, but it just didn't show up. And that's the one that's $6,272.
What's the comment saying, lying over in Gilbert, do we have?
That one also is on its way here with, I had Jamar also bid that one come in, and that one would be just replacing that pipe. I don't know if you actually looked in that tunnel, but it's...
Yeah, I mean, you were in there a couple years ago, it was full of water.
So, um, like I said, I hate to delay things, because I know the time of year and stuff, but I did everything I could to get that bid here.
What's the board, what's the board's consensus on getting this done in a timely manner? Do you want to wait for a bid, or do you want to wait for the other bids to come in, or...
Would you want me to do something like go with the lowest one, and let you know what it is, so time, at least get it going? I don't know if that's proper.
I, and I, and I don't know how to do it, but I wouldn't have any problem if you ran it by Bill and, and Shao. But I don't know if we would need to put a ceiling on that, or...
I mean, it's, yeah, I agree with, with Director Schubert, because it's difficult when we know that the timing issues are hard, and, and I also realize how difficult it is to get bids sometimes for different projects, and these are, I mean, the reality is these are smaller cost projects, which are even, make it more difficult sometimes to get bids from people.
That is correct.
You know, and it's just unfortunate that we didn't really find a lot of this stuff until we started turning the boilers on, running that more of an all-day thing, so...
So, why don't we just wait for that other bid to come in, and then we'll just make a decision, or, you know, you can...
So if it's here first thing in the morning, like it might be on like the computer right now, but...
Well, we know it's not gonna be higher than what you're marking.
No.
Yeah, that's as high as it's going to go.
Yeah, so then...
I can let that know first thing in the morning.
If it's not, I mean, if it's not higher than this, can we approve it with, because it's stuff that has to be done for safety and insurance.
You can put that ceiling on it.
Yeah, to the lowest responsible bidder, or whatever.
What about the other, the other things under the JK Mechanical bids?
Well, the other one is the blowdown valve in back of the, I think it's boiler number two in that one. That is, I think it's a general maintenance, you see, we have...
But is it, didn't Jamar bid out this though, too?
Yeah, Jamar bid everything that JK did.
And we're waiting on that?
Yes, I wanted duplicate.
So, yeah, so can, so that's what I guess, what I was saying is, can we put a cap on the one for the boiler roof repair, just as we are for the old gym, and then cap the other, the other fixes that have to be done regarding the...
The piping?
The piping and heating for the swimming pool. And have that the same way while waiting for the other bid to come in?
Um, well, like I said, I know that the one for the pool, I think is extremely important, and I know these pipes for insurance. Now, of course, we won't see the inspector till next June, but I'm not saying let's wait.
Right.
In case they do come, or we have an issue, or...
Do we know what the cost of repiping the condensate line in Gilbert is gonna be done?
No, we don't, not yet.
Do you have any, I guess?
I don't have to guess on that, really.
We'd hold you to it, you know?
Like with that last problem we had, when you're thinking this, and all of a sudden, you know, this, and another 10 feet is bad, and... So, but by looking at it, we don't have to dig anything up, we don't have to do that, it's just wrong in that tunnel.
I mean, I would say that if, if the other bids come in close, not to exceed this, I would say just go ahead with, use your own discretion to approve, to get it done. Okay, because it is a small dollar amount, you know?
Total for the JK Mechanical contractors proposal right now is $13,382 for those three repairs. And then Jamar, we would be looking at $8,500 would be the top, and then the old gym, $5,000.
Because the longer we wait, the harder it is gonna, it's gonna be to get these guys up here.
Right.
What is their timeline? If they approve this tomorrow, what would be their timeline? No, yeah, on the roofs.
On the roofs, they could be here, I would think they would start by Friday, for sure.
Okay, all right.
Just to clarify, so the roofs, they're thinking no more than $5,000?
I'm thinking the whole thing, yeah. I was gonna say that.
So the $8,500, because you're proposing a different patch job than what was on here?
Yes.
Got it.
See, on the $8,500, that was patch job, that was including all three bad spots. But that was doing a more extensive on that boiler repair roof. Now, I'm thinking, what, because I don't know if that's something you guys want to replace eventually, the whole thing, or what, but for now, if we just repair it, so we don't have water coming in, just to get it spied until maybe revisit it in the spring.
Okay.
So if, if we do the $5,000, which is a less extensive patch, but the $8,500, will we be, might we be coming back and putting in more than the difference, the $3,500 on that roof? Cheap patch and a better patch, it might cost us more in the end.
Yeah, there's always that, but I was just thinking on the part of saving some money, and then also with the life of being up in Gilbert, I don't know how, how many more years will be there.
Well, and we don't know, we don't know.
Yeah, exactly, so...
The usage of it, but it might, it might end up costing more, put it that way.
You know, and I was also thinking too, just the time of year, you know, just, I just don't want water coming in places, and we're doing more damage that way either. And that way we can, I know we can get this part done.
Quickly.
Quickly.
I'd rather do the job right versus just put a Band-Aid on and cross your fingers for $3,500, that's just my personal opinion. Then when Matt brought up, and that's how it goes, the highest responsible bidder, are these, both of these outfits, you know, quality?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and like I said, there's a third one out there too, Bolt, but they just haven't contacted us on, and they've all done extensive work at our campuses before.
Well, and if we would, off of what Director Sorkin had mentioned, if we would be looking at doing the full proposal for this, it would be more than the $8,500, this is just for the boiler roof. Where, where Mike has bring in, in that, that's fine, that...
The old gym.
There's also the old gym that's needed too, so, so just with that awareness too.
You know, and the other thing, I, just so you know, the, we don't have water leaking in the boiler roof at the moment, it's not coming in. In the old gym, it's coming in, the cafeteria, it's coming in. So, the extent up there, that was one reason why I thought maybe we didn't have to go so extensive on there right now. But we do not have water coming in that boiler room from the roof.
And on the second part of that, when it comes to the piping, I mean, the piping is the piping, the piping has to be done in accordance with code.
Right.
So there's really not, there's not like someone's gonna do a lesser of a job, it's just gonna be lesser dollar amount.
Right.
For the same, exact same work.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Yeah, so like I said, they're all, they all bid the exact same, so it's apples and apples.
The scope of work is exactly the same? So what would the board like to do? Just put that in Mike's hands, and just then get, turn it over to Jeff as soon as he gets those bids, and...
I think he's on the right track.
Okay, all right. That's what I'd like to see done, that way the job can be done, you can set up the time to have them up here and do that work.
Okay, I'll just keep Jeff informed of what I'm doing.
Yeah, do we need to have a motion on that, Jeff? So the 12.2, then, to approve the maintenance projects as discussed, as discussed...
Like Jeff said, we need to put a ceiling on the boiler room.
Which would be $18,382 if we use the $5,000 and all of the JK Mechanical.
Well, it's gonna be a little higher than that, because we gotta do some piping underneath, uh, we gotta replace the condensate pipe from the boiler to the...
And that, so you don't, you don't have the approximate cost on?
No, no, there's nothing on that yet. That was an added after, can you say 25?
I was just gonna say, yeah, I was just gonna say 25. Would that cover, potentially not?
Well, if it's, comes more, I'll come back, that's all.
And, I mean, and the reality too is the 25 would be the cap for all the projects. So if some of the projects do come in with a lower bid, that would give more room for the one that we do not have the cost of at this point.
So 12.2, then, we will approve the maintenance projects as discussed, right? Is that how you'd like them?
I think so.
Okay.
With a cap of...
25,000?
Thousand for all projects, so not necessarily having them itemized, that way it allows...
The work to continue.
The work to move over into another project area.
I will make the motion, motion by Addy to approve these maintenance projects, can I get a second?
All support.
Support by Director Yohan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.0, no, no, 12.3, listing of old buildings for sale by realtor.
Mr. Chair, you and I had a conversation earlier, and this kind of spills into 15.2, but latest discussions with the city... uh, fifteen point two, but latest discussions with the city who are likely to buy Site A outright without a line swap at this point, um, so we're going to, we'll end up paying fair market value for, for Site A, which is five hundred thousand dollars an acre, somewhere in that range, about forty acres up there, but in return...
You said five hundred thousand dollars an acre?
Five hundred to a thousand dollars an acre.
Oh, thank you.
I heard five hundred thousand.
I was going to say, I was going to say, I kind of, yeah, I, I picked that apart right away.
Not quite that. We wouldn't have much left to build. So, anyway, um, if we do that, one of the other things that they're asking for is that we form a committee of, of city officials and school board officials to, for the sale of these buildings, so that we can have some type of agreement, so, because they, they, they would like to have a say at least, and make sure that something bad doesn't happen. With that, if that goes through that way, Mr., Mr. Addy and I were talking, some of the buildings that are vacated, now we might as well put them up for sale now.
I agree.
So, what do you think?
I think so.
Yeah, that's a waiting, that we've been vacant for a long time.
And we're insuring buildings we don't even use.
Yeah.
And they're creating out.
Well, this comes as a big surprise to me, but why would you sell the buildings we have now, we might have different owners, maybe somebody wants to buy the whole shebang, or maybe, we haven't even investigated what other entities or uses for those buildings besides the City of Evlock. I mean, wow, this is, this is all of a sudden.
Yeah.
I guess I, I don't look at that as the Evlock-Gilbert School District's responsibility to investigate potential, I mean, that's part of the putting it for sale.
But you, you just talked about the, uh, the City of Evlock buying it.
Well, not buying it, they don't want to buy it, but they'd like to be a part of who, who does buy it.
Well, you said something about a, you, they don't want, not, not a swap anymore, but now buying, uh, we, let's see, we buying from them.
We would buy Site A from them.
Yes.
For five hundred to a thousand dollars an acre.
Yes, and they, they get, there's a committee formed, so they get a say in how we may or may not sell our properties in our campuses.
Yep, within their city.
But they do want that property.
They don't want that.
They want, they...
They do want it.
They do want it, but it's going to, it's going to...
My conversation, they would like to have it if there wasn't any buildings.
Yep.
But our first obligation is to try to sell them, so...
I think it's reasonable that the city wants to, and there's too many in these buildings, um, around the range, whether it's the, the Bowles School in Hoyt Lakes that's sitting empty, or the School of BoV where developers have come, the school districts have been happy to give them a deed for a dollar with promises that things would get done, and they come in and cannibalize the buildings, take everything they can make a nickel out of, and then it sits there and goes tax forfeit. And I can understand the city wanting to make sure the cities, which, because we're going to be dealing with that, over too potentially, um, just want to...
On that note, um, I have set up a meeting with the Gilbert City Council for November twelfth, they don't have a time yet, they haven't given me a time, but I don't know if you want a committee of board over there, or you want the whole board, or, whatever, if it's in Gilbert on the twelfth, they have a regular meeting that happens before the regular meeting.
For what purpose?
To talk about that school building.
To talk about, call the Gilbert School Building.
Yeah, to see if the city wants to either potentially take it over.
As in first right of purchase or first right of refusal?
First right of refusal.
I just don't understand the, I understand, and I, I heard differently, I heard that now the, the idea would be that we would purchase the city land and they would purchase our land because of some reason, I don't know if it's a legal reason or what, and to do it that way, so I do still believe that they are interested in that, it's not that...
City of Evlock?
The City of Evlock, yes, in our, in this, this campus.
But put the numbers together, Polly, we're going to take three million dollars of our two and a half million home, it's going to cost them all these buildings.
One, three.
Okay, and we're going to, and we're going to trade them for, we're going to trade them for...
Forty thousand dollars.
Forty, forty thousand dollars of land, there's, public would never buy them.
I understand, but that, that's not how it nece, would necessarily have to shake down, that's what maybe they proposed, but that doesn't make financial sense, so why would we do that? That's my point.
We're not doing that.
Would that, why would we, I know, and, and so we wouldn't do that, no, so e, e, even though that might have been a proposal by them, we wouldn't do that, so...
So, I guess I don't get what your argument is on what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's not what we're talking about.
Well, are we getting rid of all these buildings, making all these swaps? We don't even offer consolidated yet.
It doesn't, we're, we don't have to consolidate, we're having new schools, we have referendum money that is being put for a new elementary and a new high school, that has nothing to do with the consolidation, that is going to happen, we have to figure out a plan of what we're doing with our current schools. I would rather start making that plan now than seeing and exploring what's there with the Realtor doing their job and go from there than wait until after the fact.
How, how would we, if we do move forward, do we put out an RFP for a Realtor?
Realtor?
Or, I mean, are we looking specifically for someone who has experience in this type of thing, or just...
It certainly should be a commercial Realtor, for commercial buildings, if, if that only...
I'm not sure any of the local ones around here are going to be lining up to put their sign in the front yard.
But there are some pretty good Realtors around here that advertise pretty...
That do do some commercial.
That do, that aggressively, you know, aggressively attack the advertising, you know, I mean, they go after to...
I guess I could put in that.
I, I was going to say, I would like to see like an RFP or something go out to be able to get ideas, because part of that negotiation piece also is their commission and everything else, too, so, yeah.
So, I mean, selling them would be, trying to sell them would be the best thing to do, I think. And, hey, you know, and if the city, and I understand the city, yeah, should have some sort of say in, you know, well, I mean...
They can provide input.
Yeah, they can provide input, not, you know, they would, you know, provide input on, you know, what the future plans would be, you know, uh, some sort of stipulation, you know what I'm saying? That, that, yeah, you're right, I mean, you'll end up like the Bray School in Boabik, you know, the Bray School in Boabik, I mean, we don't want that, in our, you know, we don't want to be those people, you know?
I think it would be appropriate for them to have an input.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like we're having, it's not like we're having a contract with them to say they have to, I mean, the committee has to be in agreement for the sale of it, it's the, if there's a committee, it's input, and then that input from the committee comes forward to the board for when a decision is made, so I'm fine with that.
Alright, I will draft the RFP.
Okay. Alright, so Jeff, you're going to go ahead and take care of that, and just kind of look for some Realtors to come and just see potentially what the buildings are worth and put them on the market?
Yep.
And what buildings would that be, you'd be doing that to, to start?
Uh, in the short term, it would be the old junior high building and the manual arts building.
To start, okay.
And, and I just want to say, and again, if you sell those two buildings to one entity or person or whatever, and then this campus, this fourteen, sixteen acre campus to somebody else, there's some crossover there, I, I don't know.
But those, I do...
To sell, just, I'm just saying, does it make sense?
I do believe that those pieces of property are on their own plat of land, am I correct, Jeff?
I, I think it will likely be more enticing to split up the properties versus expecting someone to come in and take all of it and figure out something to do with it, if we're truly hoping, because I truly hope that they can be repurposed and for something different, for, you know, and I, I think it will be much easier to, to split off the properties for those type kind of agencies to come in to do something like that.
Okay, so Jeff, you'll take care of that?
Yep.
Okay, then, on that note, you kind of got a little, a little, a little off topic, but it was on the same topic on November twelfth, you were going to set up with a, set up something with the city council of Gilbert, or...
Yes, we, um, I have been in contact with the mayor there, and he said that they would put us on the agenda for their study session prior to the regular meeting to talk about, uh, the Gilbert School.
And that would be our full board going...
Well, that would be up to you.
I would recognize the committee board.
So, so a committee, who would, what would the...
That's you.
Me? I would like to attend. Who else would like to attend?
Well, why would, would we, why would we not set up a, a similar meeting with the City of Evlock with, with representatives from the board, just like the City of Gilbert? Why would we not do that?
We could, but at the moment, this is the one I have set up.
I think we should do both cities before we go any further.
At the moment, they have November twelfth set up.
And I think that Evlock City Council meets, do they meet the same night as we meet? No, they meet on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So, on November twelfth, you'll have a, a meeting with the City of Gilbert, do we know what time that study session?
I don't have an exact time, but I know the regular meeting is at six, so it'd be before that.
Okay, and I suggest that we, um, initiate the same type of meeting with the City of Evlock before we go forward with any of this, this Realtor thing and whatever.
To meet with the cities first, before we...
Well, to meet with the cities, just to get input and see what their costs are.
Think that's a good idea, but I don't see any reason to hold off on the RFP.
On the RFP, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Then we should do that for the Gilbert Campus, too.
We don't have any vacant buildings in Gilbert.
No, we don't.
Oh, you're talking about just the vacant ones now?
Yeah, yeah.
Just those two?
So, who would like to attend if, when Jeff sets this up at six, or the, in Gilbert and in Evlock, who would like to attend?
Well, I, I would attend anyway, just for the information, but officially, I would, I would, I would too.
I've got enough on my plate.
One more.
The, the week's a little tough for me, I, I would be willing to, if other people can't, I'll be out of town for a couple of days that week, so...
Tom can attend?
Tom's going to do it. Alright, good enough.
Okay, and Jeff, you'll be there as well, right?
Yep.
You said you were, right?
Yep. Okay, you just...
Yep.
Yep, and, and then, and Tolly, right? Tolly wants to go, Tolly is part of it, too? Okay, so Jeff, you will let us know?
I'll let, let us know as soon as...
The exact dates?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
But definitely November twelfth.
Uh, November twelfth, and, uh, that'd be just for Gilbert so far, right? Evlock is pending.
Yep.
Correct, alright, very good. Uh, thirteen point oh, administrative report.
Um, actually, for the sake of time, I, I just made the, the sheet for this, I was going to talk to us in the November twelfth meeting, it's all, yeah, we kind of got to get going.
Yep.
First line on that sheet is where we ended off last year, I'll just add to it every week, every meeting.
So, we're at eight seventy-six, then? And that's up? From eight seventy-two, which was...
The end.
The end?
The school year last year.
Okay, alright, alright. Um, that's it, Jeff, for that, for the administrative report?
That's all.
Okay, how about fourteen point oh, uh, committee, uh, joint board report consolidation update?
Um, at the last meeting, we had wanted this to be a, some standing items on there, I just talked about fifteen two, as much as I know at this point, um, fifteen one, the consolidation update?
You're reading, uh...
We are going to go through a pretty extensive one in about forty-five minutes, I feel like that long.
Okay.
Do that.
So, you're, yeah, we're at fourteen oh, so fourteen one is consolidation update, fourteen two is the land acquisition update, so I want to know what you're reading, you said fifteen.
Oh, I actually had a, if you want to know, I mean, I, I put some old business on, and she printed the wrong one and sent it to you, so...
Okay. Okay.
Oh, you threw the bus on there?
I threw it on the bus.
So...
So, as far as the land acquisition update, I understand that now the City of Virginia is having their property appraised, and from the first conversation about them giving it to the school district, now it sounds like they're wanting to sell it to the school district for the academy piece?
Yeah, they are waiting on an appraisal for that.
So, that makes it...
That doesn't necessarily mean that's what they're going to sell it for, those weren't considered, wanted it appraised, I don't know why.
I watched the last Virginia School Board meeting, and there was a representative there from the city and said that they were having that parcel appraised.
That's true.
And one of the, one of the...
The appraisal is not done yet.
Okay, one of the Virgin, uh, Virginia School Board members asked, well, it was said by Mayor Cuffey previously that, you know, it would be given, and maybe just the infrastructure would be our responsibility, but he was wondering why it's changed now, too, so that's going to be a cost, another cost possibly in the budget, and...
For appraisal?
Maybe, maybe the district will have to buy that property from Virginia versus being...
Well, we'll just have to see, though.
Well, I know, but you're talking about an update, land acquisition update, okay? That's part of it, an update.
I would, I would find it hard to believe that they would sell it after going, after stating publicly that they would gift it to us, I just find that...
The representative from the city said they were having it appraised.
Yeah.
Watch, watch the meeting.
How many acres are, are involved?
Okay, for the sake of time, we'll probably have that conversation at the, at the...
You will.
Okay, so fifteen point oh, board member topics, can we, if we are going to talk, can we keep our comments to one minute? Uh, Tom, you have anything? Polly, you have anything?
Yeah, I spoke to you previously about the unfinished business, business, and the unfinished business plus others that I brought up at the last meeting, and for the next meeting, you can get those things on the agenda.
As you, as you just heard from Jeff, she threw Deb under the bus.
I threw Deb under the bus on that one, now.
Yep.
Oh, well...
Sorry.
Alright, so the unfinished business was...
I know, but even if we had it...
She gets away with that for, for a year.
Even if we had it, though, on there, we wouldn't have had anything under there to speak about unless we had added it to the agenda today, so it's not that, just the topic wasn't there.
No, there was...
We did not have any substance under there.
There was substance under there.
We did, okay.
There was communication between you and Deb, which is not unusual, since you...
I did not know that, because I did talk, I did not talk with you before that this agenda was set, so I didn't know if you had or hadn't put any unfinished business on.
He came in to see it.
No, okay, as of today, I did not know that.
I told you, I did go, I told you the phone conversation this morning.
We did not talk about what those, those topics might be, but let's do it for the next one, okay?
Okay, so board member topics, okay, um, I have nothing. Kelly?
I just want to say that, um, it sounded like it was a wonderful turnout vote, and I love seeing all of the children pictures everywhere, and, um, yeah, it was neat to see, so...
Oh, honestly, I could, I can just say that...
Thanks for our school.
Yeah, all I can say is that all those young kids are just getting so old now.
I know, it's very sad, yeah, we had a lot of milestones this week, so...
Yeah, I, I, I would second that, both are both things, too.
Um, the only thing that, you know, I'm looking through the, um, agendas for this evening, I just, I get kind of wrapped up in the, um, verbiage that's used, like, for the joint board. Can we start, instead of saying joint, can we say collaboration or collaborative board or something? Because people start mistaking the joint board with joint powers board, and it just, it complicates things. So if, that's just something I had mentioned once before, and if we could try and do that, that would be great. I think it would help with confusion.
Jeff, you on that?
Easy, sweet.
And talk to Noel about that as well.
Okay.
First year in ten years, I didn't have a kid across the street at the golf course getting their pictures taken, but that that was a little weird, but I would have to have it on the internet.
Alright.
Just a little mention on, uh, when I used to jog, kids did it at the play this week, too. It was very well done.
Okay, we got another meeting at six o'clock at the, at the Cooperative in Mountain Iron, so on that note, sixteen point oh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Support.
Motion by Director Shadis, support by Director Lautiger. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.